Would you reduce the 2/8 of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose stance, one nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all?
Is there a motion for it to be remunerated?
Ah, yes, I make a motion for it to be remunerated April 29th and April 30th and yesterday's, and May 4th.
Is there a second?
I have second for my question. Any discussion on that? If not, please send the probation department.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Who's on first? Who's on first?
I think I'm here in the support.
Well, the issue that we're facing is a lack of personnel certainly and the overpopulation. I mean, I understand that, you know, money's an issue, but we can't continue to have seventy-two, seventy-three inmates in jail with the staff we have. It's just not working.
Female.
Female.
We're running around two hundred right now total prisoners per day. It's been averaging around two hundred.
And they just told us we lost six people in the last twelve days from overdoses.
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. I thought it was six, but it's nine.
May I ask, I'm sure we're down the road, so to speak, from Manhattan, but with the request to refund, in this case Silver House, do we see any potential utilization of that?
Yeah, the recovery house should be open, I've been promised, for females, it should be open by mid-June, and we will be able to utilize that house, but as fast as we fill it up, the jail's gonna fill up as well. I'm telling you right now, and this is God's truth, is that every single person that I've had at an arraignment, that I've requested to be tested, go over to the probation department, be tested, have been testing positive, every single person, in two years. So what do I do with those people that test positive? Because they're gonna kill themselves, or they're gonna go and rob somebody to, you know, feed their habits, so I have to place them in jail, have to. And, you know, that's the truth of it.
You could place them when the recovery house is open. Can you place them there?
It's more of a step-down, so what we're gonna do, this is my thought about utilizing the recovery house, is once they've gone to jail, and maybe Neocap, or Orianna House, or even just sat in jail for a while, then to step them down and put them in the recovery house, because then they'll be ready to, you know, start their lives again. That's what recovery house is all about.
I know this isn't going to probably have any impact, but we, I'm trying to think what function we were at, maybe about two, three weeks ago, and Sue Whitehurst was there, and she did say that any female inmate incarcerated here, who has the potential of coming out, they will move them to the top of the list. I know that they have very few beds, but she wanted that to be known, and I do not know what their...
You mean at the Horizon House?
Yes, at Horizon, that they would move any female prisoner that you're willing to, I don't know if that's called alternative sentence, or let out, that they would do that, so, but I, again, I know that's not, you know, that's like the answer to that.
Right, they are full, and it's more, because they're allowed to leave the facility, and where it is, is less successful than it used to be, let's put it that way. If we had more of a lockdown facility, it would be better.
What do you propose? I mean, what, I know, you need officers, and in all sincerity, we wanna do that for you, I do, I would assume the other two commissioners.
Ideally, we need an extra two pods, ideally, and more people. I mean, that's the rate that this is growing, folks.
You know, our debt limit, we have quite a limitation as to what we could do, so as to funding it, I wouldn't be certain how to do that. I know that, you know, thus far, it's been suggested about that remaining quarter of percent sales tax, and I would think maybe that's what you're going to ask. I would be willing to put that on the ballot, and it would have to be quite an effort, a concerted effort, to sell the, because we know what happened with the last, which was a property tax, but I don't know if you're asking to impose it, I'm not inclined to impose a tax on it either.
I think it's important that we put a sales tax levy on the ballot as soon as possible, because we're going to need to increase the capacity. My question is, is the reconfiguration of the jail still the best plan?
I think ideally, because we know that the overpopulation is due to drugs, that's the bottom line, ideally, would be to have a separate facility, that would be a lockdown facility, that would just be for drug abusers.
Like in the same area, Lori, that the jail is in?
Yeah.
Do you own a lot of the land around there?
Even where the old nursing home is, if you could tear that down and build something there, I mean, you have that property as well, but it would have to be, if it's a lockdown facility, it has to adhere to the guidelines, much like a jail, and the sheriff would have to protect it as well, but that way you could have staff in there to help them with their recovery. And, I mean, that would be the ideal, and that, something like a Neocap, but for our county only.
Yeah, well, it would seem that that would be the best thing to do. Again, I think we need to be able to pay for it.
Right.
Because of this debt limit, I mean, there's just no way, but I believe, I may be wrong, I think Mrs. Esposito said that quarter of a percent would generate maybe five million, I don't know, Vick, you're here, is that?
I don't know.
I think she said five million.
Four and a half, four and a half, or current estimates, maybe five.
Yeah, so, I would think, you know, let me back up to the last time we did this, I thought there was more of restriction on how the sales tax proceeds could be spent, and there wasn't as much of restriction on the real estate, but, you know, maybe that doesn't apply here, because the sheriff needs money also for staffing. Does anybody know that?
You can choose the category that would allow for that.
Okay.
The key to the property tax, the last time we went for it, was we prepared it smaller, and we thought that would be more favorable than others. The income tax, it's the quarter of a percent, and I think that's the smallest unit you can do if I...
Yeah.
When we talk about the sales tax and increasing the capacity, this is more of a longer term, because it takes time, and so I'm thinking about what can we do short-term, and I was reading in the paper about the Youngstown privately-run prison, now has two thousand beds, but they're only using like five hundred and fifty of them, and I was wondering if we would possibly be able to, on a very temporary basis, contract with them to take some overflow.
Again, that's money, okay, that's what we need, or we don't...
Everything costs money.
Todd, would we, if we could make some alterations at the jail based on, this goes back, Sheriff, to when you came in here some time ago, and your staff had recommended some modifications, and I think you all thought, well, that would be, well, let's try to do that and get it done quickly, and then we found out it'd be a million, but I'm wondering, with what we have set aside for capital improvements, and I know this has happened too many times, but could we defer those projects and make that available, to make those alterations at the jail now?
It would only be like a third, right?
Well, it's a start.
Yeah, there's the, you got the capital side, you got the operating side, we could meet the capital side, again, trying to...
I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking for anything.
...new part, and then there's a question as to whether we need to come up to speed on even the existing part before they let us do the new part.
Well, it was just, just an idea, I don't hope that would help you.
I had asked a question, I'm wondering if we could get a response to the idea of whether or not temporarily leasing space at the Youngstown.
What do you think about that, Dave? Was that feasible, or...
Well, the last time I looked into that, it was pretty expensive. I checked in another county to see what it would cost, and it was, it was pretty pricey.
More expensive than doing something else locally.
Yeah, since they just lost their contract with the...
It might be doable.
Yeah, they may be desperate to get people, because they have so many, you know, beds that are not full. U.S. Marshals are still there, but...
You know, if anybody has any ideas, we speak up, really seriously, anything, we're desperate.
Who would be responsible for contacting them? Would it be the prosecutor?
Well, I would think the sheriff's decision.
I mean, that's certainly something that we don't know the answer to until we ask the question, so I certainly am all in favor of asking the question, to at least, then we can make an informed decision as to whether or not it's too expensive, so somebody needs to look into that. The bottom line is that this situation is not gonna get any better, because the state of Ohio is forcing more and more of the felonies onto the local communities, and, you know, and they've got the same problem that we have, the biggest budget department in the state of Ohio is the Ohio Department of Corrections, and they've got fifty-four thousand inmates for thirty-eight thousand beds, so they're kicking people out sooner, they are not, they don't want the felony fours and felony fives, which are remote, which are a good percentage of these cases that we are talking about. We are trying to use, as far as immunity court, and we are trying to use alternative sentencing, as far as, you know, the DUIs and stuff, we, for the first time in the six years that I have now been on the bench, we are now even considering bifurcated sentences. The statute allows us, multiple offense DUIs, to do a jail sentence and house arrest, if, but, we have to, we have to put a separate order on finding that the reason that we are allowing that is because of lack of space. We've been doing it for women for some time, because that's more of an acute problem, but we, for the first time, last month, we started doing the same with men, and so the male population is also becoming a problem. The jail was built, you know, thirty years ago, it is now, you know, it has served its purpose, but we are now facing the unpopular proposition of having to spend the money. Nobody wants to pay more taxes, I get that, I don't wanna pay any more taxes, you know, nobody wants to pay more taxes, I get that. However, you know, we can only do so much, we can have them tested every day, we, you know, we've, we've put some people out, let people out, and they have to report, and then one of the overdoses was somebody who had gone over and passed a urine test that morning.
And then went out.
And then went out and OD'd and died.
And the testing's the other thing, we're throwing it on the probation department, and, I mean, they're spending all their funds testing these folks.
Right.
You know, on a daily, weekly basis, and we need more probation officers, it's not just the sheriff, we're all...
Sure, right. No, no, I know that, I mean...
And, you know, it's a sad commentary, you know, it's a sad commentary that, you know, the United States is 4.3% of the world's population, and we consume eighty percent of the world's painkillers, prescribed painkillers, and it is, and, you know, these people, you know, you see all sorts of walks of life, and it's real easy to throw up your hands and say, the heck with these people, they're not worth it, you know, let them die, and they're...
So it hits your family.
Yeah, we've even had people come up to me, how the heck with that?
Well, of course, that's not our stance.
I understand that, I know that's not your stance, but, you know, it works great until somebody you know, and we've seen, yeah, we've seen, we've seen kids who are just in high school, we've seen soccer moms, we've seen, you know, guys who have struggled, and, you know, they get hurried to work, and all of a sudden they're on, you know, Vicodin or Oxy, and they get hooked, and all of a sudden heroin is cheaper, you know, it's a vicious circle, and we need to try to fight that, and I think that there's no easy fix here, and it's not one...
There's no silver bullet.
And there's no one fix either, it takes...
Well, you asked the question about who would find out about, there are two issues we really need to deal with today, one is longer term, I mean, we can't build a jail overnight, one, I think we, my preference would be that we put a sales tax on as soon as possible, and move forward as quickly as possible to expand the capacity, but in the meantime, we have to figure out other ways that we can deal with the overcrowding, and so your question was, who would ask, I would think it would be the decision of the sheriff, this would be my guess, as to whether or not even to use another facility, and in order to make that decision, I would assume you'd wanna know what the cost is now, since they've lost fifteen hundred of their, about fifteen hundred of their capacity, they might be willing to charge a little less right now to help...
Or maybe contracting for at least like fifteen beds, they might give you a discounted rate or something like that.
Yeah, just on a temporary basis, I'm not sure we'd wanna do it for an extended period of time at all, but just to help us until we can get an increased capacity at the jail.
And if we did that, would we be using their manpower, I mean, we wouldn't have to send folks over there, it would be all them who just pay.
Right. It would be, it would be our responsibility to transport them, bring them back for hearing...
But it probably, use prisoners that are gonna be in for long term, that way we don't have to...
Right.
We bring them.
Question to Todd, if we get a sales tax increase, we have the capacity to do a half percent currently, and so if we did, like, would we do a half percent, or would we do a quarter of a percent?
Quarter would be four and a half to five million.
Okay, so...
Covered building a pod, we were originally talking to remodel and then one pod, which certainly had a...
When is the soonest that it could be on the ballot?
I think we...
That'd be special election.
It'd have to be, no, we couldn't afford, I don't think we could afford to...
Is it November?
I think it would be November, and we'd have to get it in by August, sometime in August.
Yeah, we can do that. You know, you could even build on a pod or two to the jail that would be a facility just for, you know, drug users, where we could do specialized treatment, I think, I think that would be a very smart thing to do, because, again, this, like Kevin said, this is not going away, we're looking at long-term, ten years, and we're gonna be fighting this, and...
Do you think that we would do the, oh, the sheriff's gone, but, a reconfiguration of the jail, 'cause that probably would be something that we could do quicker.
Like getting more beds in or something?
Yeah, he was, we had a plan out, if you were here, he described our technical plan, for reconfiguring the female portion of the jail, so that it would be like a dormitory.
The dorm was thirty-four people that we talked about the last time.
The cost on that was approximately a million dollars, we have all that information, we know that.
And then, the question is, should we look at the idea of doing the reconfiguration as soon as possible, and then putting an issue on the ballot with the idea of building a pod also?
I think so, both.
Sheriff, are you all in agreement, if we should go forward with trying to also do the reconfiguration, just to accommodate that female overcrowding that had been suggested before, if you think, still think that's feasible, even though there's a need for additional pod or two to possibly proceed with that, but that's going to mean some, how do we, you know, I'm relating to Mrs. Esposito saying your debt limit is, you know, there's, we need to be very cautious as to what we will be able to borrow, then if we do borrow, you know, please understand, it is going to adversely affect everyone else's budget, I mean, it's, we're going to have to, and we can do that, it's just that that's gonna be a necessity, and I well know that not only is it an issue at the jail, it's an issue with the courts, with the prosecutor, with probation, so although it's...
It trickles down everywhere.
Yeah, right, so, you know, just please be conscious of that.
Well, we can borrow for the capital, but we can't borrow the staff, that's what the picture encompasses.
That's part of the issue we're facing now.
Sure.
And you're running like three additional people?
Well, I don't, I would think that we have a willingness to proceed with putting it on the ballot for this November yet, and it's gonna be incumbent upon us to get out, and I know that you did a very diligent job before going out, when the other levy was on, but it's gonna have to be a concerted effort on our part to go out and sell it.
So we've decided to do that, to put a quarter of a percent sales tax on the November ballot?
Yes, we can do that, we can do it now, we're officially convened, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make, this is at the joint entry to move forward, correct? Because there's a whole process that you need to, it has to be a process...
Well, we'll add it to joint entries, and then we'll follow the prescribed procedure with the resolution.
Now, that's long-term, so we have to start thinking in terms of shorter-term solutions, and I'm wondering if we're planning to also do the reconfiguration, how long would that take? I mean, that would take a while. I don't know.
Did we have time estimates from the architect? I'm not sure if they included any, I can check with Joanne on that.
Yeah, but it would be quicker then, because the tax issue isn't going to go on until November, so this would be a little soon.
As far as priority, Dave, are you thinking staffing, like, yesterday, three additional people, or how far are you...
We're already short back there. That week that we had seventy, was it two, seven, three, seventy-four, I can't have that going on, it's, they've already filed some health, safety grievances because of staffing issues there. Kathleen, you had mentioned something about taking people off the road, I can't do that, that's a change of classification, it's a contractual thing, I can't move deputies into corrections, vice versa.
I'm wondering, when you talked about this before, I thought you said the immediate need would be maybe for three additional corrections officer, if that would assist in any way with the current overcrowding, and then we'd have to say to Todd, where can we cut to come up with funding? I mean, if we're willing to do that, I'm willing to look at it and do it, but it's gonna, it's gonna necessitate cutting somewhere else, and that's, basically, that's gonna come down to eliminating positions in the county, and then keep in mind we'll have to pay unemployment to those people that are gonna lose their jobs.
And the truth is that when we reconfigure the jail, it's gonna be more people, when we go the new pod, it's gonna be more people.
Yeah, so, the long-term answers, is more money available to us to spend to meet the need? So would you, Kathleen and Vicki, want to look at reductions now to come up with money to fund the three positions?
Is that the priority right now, Dave, of three additional corrections officers to, for these seventy-four women or whatever, I mean, is that what you're thinking?
Is that gonna assist in any way?
Yeah, it would help.
But is that the priority, that's what the...
Yeah, I mean, if the staffing stays the way it has been, or the population stays the way it has been, we just don't have the people.
Sure. Now, if there's possibility of leasing space at Youngstown, if they greatly reduce their price or something, and it makes sense to you, and you take some of the longer-term prisoners and place there on a temporary basis, that might get us in a position where we can use whatever money we can scrape up to do the reconfiguration of the jail.
I like that idea, it's a quick fix.
Because if we, if we use the money for personnel, we're not gonna be able to come up with the money for a reconfiguration, so maybe you could find out whether or not that's a possibility, let us know.
I don't think we're gonna have the money, no matter what, we're going to have to see what we can borrow, and to be honest with you, if we're going to have any money, even paying the bill for having the fifteen beds elsewhere, I would think is gonna necessitate some cuts.
Could we ask Joanne to come to tell us if she knows how long...
Help me out here, Todd, what is, you know, I guess, available, where would we take it? We do have a reserve, keep in mind, that may necessitate an increase in cost for the employees for their healthcare, I mean, it's all, you know, it all has consequences, and we just need to be straight up about that.
You know, if Youngstown would work out, that's a one-time solution while we build, we certainly could use stabilization money for that, the staffing overall, though, the staffing's the hard part, because you can't borrow for that, and so you do have to move, you know, doing the actual building, the reconfiguration for a million, that we can accomplish, it's just a matter of how long it's gonna take, it's the staffing issues, because you can't borrow for that, that's where you get into trouble finding the money, and that's where we also get into trouble, because other funds that we could use to build, you know, are the one-time sources that are allowable for staffing as well, so that really becomes the crux of the issue, is how do we staff these additions once we've got them?
Dave, how many would we have to move to alleviate needing to staff right now? I mean, how many of those folks would we have to move over to Youngstown, if that's feasible?
It's a moving target.
Changes all the...
Yeah.
Probably thirty...
Population, human population, that's about fifty.
The thing that we would have to do is, to utilize staff properly, is close one pod, so you don't have that person, the enroller, go into that pod, so you'd be talking twenty-four people to start with, to move to Youngstown, just to get the level of staff up, or would make it easier, but then you're, if we do a juggling act like we did the last time with the, with the females, when we were at seventy-four, the way the female pod is designed, just to give you some input, it's, it's not, they sit outside, and they're watching all the pods, they're not in the pod, so what we had to do is move an extra person down there to help assist, because we have twenty-some people on the floor, so that's one person, and then we have all those people, like, I go to court, visitation, and all the other stuff, that's another person, over over during the daytime, so we were tied down in the jail when we requested our budget for twenty-fifteen, so now we're coming back and saying if we had three additional full-timers, and the ability to flex the part-timers more, then we could get through until such time as we can get something definitive, such as the addition to the jail, or even if we use Youngstown, that would help. So if we did the three full-time and the two additional part-time, and we had the same problem that we had a couple of weeks ago, then we can move people, we actually closed down the male pod and made it a female pod to house them.
So you're thinking more than fifteen beds?
But that requires moving everybody, additional people to watch them.
So we're talking more than fifteen beds?
Yeah, if we did the immediate thirty-four beds in the female section, we would probably be okay until you could get some pods built.
In addition to that, we also have this recovery house that will be opening within the month, in fact, it was purchased, I think, yesterday, if I'm right, so we'll have an extra twelve beds there, hopefully.
Up to twenty-four, if we double bucket.
Okay, so that would certainly help.
Absolutely.
And then it would give us time to do the reconfiguration.
Okay, so the first step here is to call Youngstown and see what the cost is on that, is that what we're saying?
I think that's the sheriff's...
Yeah, right.
See if we can get a deal.
The cost, that seems to be the consensus, to eliminate, to find alternative housing for fifteen of the other prisoners, clean up, then some space.
But I think immediately, we have to look at staffing in the jail, we need to get people, because it's a tentative process before we can even get them to the point they can work on their own.
Well, let me ask, if we are... Well, let me ask, if we are successful and you think it's a good idea to move some people to Youngstown, that might relieve the staffing issues so that we can use that money, because that's a major cost, that we could use that money to help to pay for the reconfiguration of the jail, which I wish Joanne would be available to tell us.
Joanne is NDS, so she's not available.
Oh, okay. So that maybe we could find out how quickly we could do it. But we already have the architecture, not the plans necessarily, but we have the drawing or the conceptual drawings, right? So that might move rather quickly if we could get that done.
We'll have to know how we're going to finance it, though. I mean, we'll have to pay the bills as we're making the alterations of it. And but staffing still is a critical need and it's got to be taken care of, even with the reconfiguration. Staffing is a.
Yeah, what we saw happen when we had the seventy-four female inmates was a spike in overtime.
Sure.
Well, if we move some to Youngstown, if that's a possibility, then we have fewer people there. I'm just worried about.
The other thing that we have to consider is the transportation there, the transportation back, transportation to a.
And the rent, I mean, whatever you have to pay.
The rate.
Well, we certainly need to compile the figures.
I'd say we need the numbers and then we need to lay out the best plan to figure out how to do it.
Have you looked at any grants out there? I mean, we've been watching ourselves and.
Yeah. There should be grants available because I know that Mike Ryan is very concerned about the heroin addiction.
Right.
There are some grants and with the relationship that we have with RPC, Todd Peets, whatever grant that comes up, he is more than willing and able to do whatever, write, help write the grant. I know we've, there have been a couple and I know we've, you know, had come emails back and forth about those. So that's not a problem. I did watch a webinar Friday, Thursday or Friday. And there are some programs nationally. And I think they're mostly obviously to reduce the population in the jails that are drug dependent. And of course, those webinars give you a cursory review and it's working here and you need to look at alternatives. But, you know, there are no silver bullets as to how do you solve it. But certainly anything we can do, we'll do. So we'll get the figures and we're going to look at, first of all, if it's feasible and plausible with the sheriff, the cost for at least relocating fifteen other prisoners. We're going to look at the cost to begin the modifications at the jail. And entwined in that is the need for at least three additional full-time corrections officers. We need to at least come up with a cause for all of this, I would think. And then decide how, if possible, are we going to generate the money to pay for it?
Dave, what do you think about that priority? I mean, what Maureen just said about initially the Youngstown thing?
Yeah, we can check into that. The whole thing is very frustrating for everybody. I get that. But we keep seeing this spike in this female population. And I think now we're really behind the eight ball with it.
In hindsight.
And it's not getting better. You know, like Judge Poland said, it's, I don't know where it's going to go.
The younger.
I couldn't predict two years from now what that population would be.
Has anyone had any contact directly with Mark Frazo?
Yes, I talked to him a week ago and he told me, or maybe it was the other day when he was here, he said that they were purchasing it the next day and I think that was.
Right, I met with Sarah Roberts to go over the details on how we would run the facility, what I expected and anticipated we needed.
And you're thinking mid-June?
They, yeah, they have some people they need to relocate that are living there. They are cleaning it up and we have some money from Kent that is going to help us remodel and put in some air conditioning units and things of that nature. So I was told by mid to late June, we will be up and running. But after we have that facility, we were also looking at alter care and possibly using the alter care here in Ravenna that's been vacant for four or five years as a recovery facility. Again, that's just in the planning stages. We've talked about it a couple of times with Mark Frazo. And Judge Doherty and I have met, I think, Kevin, were you at the meeting?
Thank you. You know, Maureen, as far as that alter care, I was told it would be better just to raise it and build again because there's so much wrong with it and everything. Is that what?
You know, that's what Hummel said, it would take two million to redo it. And then NDS came to us and said, no, much cheaper than that.
Okay.
Much, it would be much cheaper?
Cheaper, cheaper.
I would think the structure is.
I walked through it. It looks great.
So the foundation is good.
Yeah, the roof looks like it needs some, you know, repair, but basically it's a solid.
Well, it's so configured, it would be ideal.
Right.
I mean, be able to prepare meals.
I think NDS owns it now, right?
Oh, I didn't know that.
We'll have to check on that, but they were willing to work with us and possibly lease us part of it. And so we're going to work on that after we get this recovery house.
Would that be necessitate also staffing costs?
Oh, yeah, yes. And if it's going to be a lockdown.
I mean, I'm not, believe me, I'm not being cynical, but I'm just saying.
Right, if it's going to be a lockdown.
Everything is a factor.
Has to be with you.
I'm going to get.
Thank you.
Do arrangements.
Sheriff, in the sense of getting the numbers for Todd, unless you have the figures from the expert, whether or not it's feasible to relocate fifteen prisoners, will you provide that to him or would it be wrong, will provide those figures?
Yeah, we can get them.
Because I, we need to make this a priority with everything else. Okay, I think that's, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you. I'll do.
I'll keep your advice on when the recovery house gets open, as soon as that will have a ribbon.
Judge Pittman? Judge Pittman, did you recycle one of those traffic cones?
Yes, I did.
This is coach. I knew that.
This way I don't lose it.
It's very admirable for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, I'll. You understand, Paul?
Thank you.
Take care.
Whatever. When do I do it? As soon as possible, within the next week or two. Okay. Okay, good stuff. We'll buy them lunch. The most important thing. First and second.
I would think when we talked about it before, it would be interesting to know how we are dealing with seven counties. We are dealing with this right now. If we've got a triple female population, I'm sure others do. I don't know if anyone is in the building pod modes or.
I know Summit County let a lot of people out.
Well, yes, right, they just closed pods.
I know, I'm going down. We received renewal, but I didn't bring it before you guys.
It seems like the stage stepped in. I mean, I'm not saying.
I know they're not. They took, you know, they took money away and mandated that you take your. So it does come down to what do we have to work with, dollarize, and then what's going to be the ramifications of that? If we tap into that reserve, you know, I think.
The plug gates are open.
Well, right, it has severe consequences. But that's why I think, obviously, Todd needs the figures and we need to then have a work session as to how do we fund it? Or what do we cut? What do we do? I think there was an acknowledgement that it may necessitate cuts elsewhere, but no, you know, no one seemed.
No one volunteered any cuts?
Oh, no, no, I don't think they've ever volunteered, but they know that that's coming. And again, it isn't just for the sheriff.
Oh, no.
I'm sure they're going to say, I need more formation officers, we need more. I don't know what their thought is on if they do acquire, who's going to acquire alter care? And who's going to provide the money for that?
See, you know, that was an enlightening moment for me. I thought alter care was just no good. I mean, that's what I heard.
Yeah, well, you know, that's gone back and forth. At one juncture, early on, Mark said he could get that facility for free.
I think we ought to get it for free.
Well, no, I mean, this was a couple of years, or two or three years ago, he said he could have it for free. Now, I don't know if NDS does own it.
Maureen said she thought NDS owned it.
Maybe they do own it.
I don't know.
Maybe they'd be willing to donate it.
At the time when Mark was, said he could get it for free, then he found out the estimate from bringing it up to date would be two million.
Well, see, that's what I thought. It wasn't worth it.
But still, you could get the facility for free and now she just said it's not going to be too much.
Right.
According to.
She's walked through it.
But again, who is going to pay for that or how is it going to be paid for? And is it going to be a county facility? She talked about having an alternative, like a lockdown, and I would imagine that could be a lockdown.
Have you read that article?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got it.
All ready?
Thank you. Well, I left my iced tea in the car. I'd like to get it, but it's not necessary.
Oh, yeah, get it, Maureen.
I got to have a stiff iced tea on this one. Our resource will be here at nine-thirty. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and get my iced tea.
Do you want to recess?
Yes.
This is for you, Maureen. That's for you also.
Would you like to come up because we are, we had officially begun.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Have you guys looked at everything through yet?
Yes. My resources, that would be you. Okay.
First item on agenda is a memo and a resolution with ODOT. They're doing a project in city Streetsboro, widening Frost Road. We have some facilities in the road. Anytime we're in their road, they start this process. Comes with the preliminary legislation that starts this whole process. Once we agree to that, then they finalize their project, the design and everything, come back to us with actual cost of what we need to contribute to relocate our facilities or adjust them as the case may be. And that's one of the conditions that we get for being in the roadway, so that we don't have to get easements in that.
But. This is for that Frost Road extension that they're.
This one is actually, for this part, it's a widening near four-eighty. They're doing it at that section down near four-eighty for this. So we only have a few minor modifications from the preliminary plans that they've sent us, so.
Sure, understood. Any questions?
I do. We're actually with the resolution agreeing to pay whatever they tell us we have to pay, right?
Yes.
We don't have a choice.
No, because we're in there right away. We could either, actually, we have two options. We could relocate it ourselves or we could just make it part of the project and pay what they come with. We found that if we try to do it ourselves, we may not adjust it exactly right. And they have to do it anyway, and they bill us anyway, so.
Just take my shortcut.
Yeah.
Okay, then, could you, Dave, draw a.
Yes.
Do you want to do the resolution also?
We can.
Yeah, I think you need the resolution, not the journal entry.
Okay. I'll make the motion to resolution to prepare plans, specifications and estimate the cost for project CH.
I think it's a different one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
ODOT.
There it is.
Number one.
Oh, right here, sorry. I'll make a motion to resolution with proposal to cooperate with Ohio Department of Transportation, project for Frost Road, CR 197, PID 92561, and the Streetsboro Regional Sewer District, number four, City of Streetsboro.
A second motion.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll be receiving the thing I.
I.
Okay, next.
The next item is a memo to prepare plan specifications and everything that we do for Countryside Estates Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is in Charleston Township. The plant itself is going on forty-four years old. The original tank in the ground is steel. It doesn't have much life left. So we need to go in and replace that tank. Part of the problem that we have is there's no redundancy with the existing design. When it was put in that long ago, they didn't care at EPA. Now they want redundancy. So we'll have to go back in and install actually two tanks so that if we need to do work, we can take the line and still keep the plant online. The project itself is budgeted this year for 2015, so we're requesting permission to do the project. Then we'll come back with the resolution to actually authorize the project.
Motion for the resolution to prepare.
I don't, do we do the resolution today?
No, the process has been that we come with a memo, get approval, and then we bring back the resolution.
So we just do a journal entry today?
Yes.
Okay.
We're just doing a journal.
Yes, yeah, I just was wondering, is, okay?
Yeah, sure, oh, sure, Maureen, I'm sorry.
Journal entries. Okay, discussion items.
Now, it's a Linnwood drive here.
Yes. Linnwood. You'll find several items in your packet. First item is to draft agenda. If there's any revisions or comments, we can obviously take care of those before the public meeting next Tuesday. We did not include on the introduction of officials, NDS, the Health Department or Regional Planning, because at the time we drafted this, we didn't know that they were coming. So we can add them if you would like, or we can just address them when we're there.
The Health, I mean, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah, we have any confirmation?
There's somebody coming from each of us.
Oh, good.
Not sure who.
I would think we want to acknowledge that, you know, the meeting.
We could list them by title.
It just would be a reference for people if they want to follow up and contact them.
And we can add them to.
Probably more to the Health Department, I would think.
You mean down here?
Yeah, we could then, since we're not sure who's coming, we could just name the NDS, Regional Planning, that. And then on the last sheet for contact information, we could add their phone numbers and everything as well.
You want to have an opportunity to look this over and then let Jeff? To proceed. The information is we can give them, it'll be very helpful.
What was the original estimate, I mean, from the water deserts of the department?
The original estimate was about fifty percent lower. I don't have the exact number on hand.
So we had no choice?
Yeah.
It would seem to me, though, we're going to discuss this that way. Because it's a, I won't say optional, but it is, it's nothing that we're mandated to do. At least the people that have voiced this at this point, they don't want it. I suppose we need to explain to them, as you have, the history of it. And it's my opinion not to go forward unless there's a longing desire and evidence that they, people want it.
Yes, so we're not in the findings and orders.
We need to hear the Health Department tell us they have a failing system, they're going to have to replace it.
Right.
What, so I imagine we'll talk about that at night?
What we had planned on doing, unless you would like a change, is have the agenda. I would basically go through the background of the project, but we're not going to go through the entire history from 2004 on. We're basically going to go from the most recent history. Then we're going to show them the costs that we have been able to. been able to find for replacement systems, and what it's going to cost for the sewer. And then let them know why the, the costs for the sewer are where, where they are. Have an open discussion and then let them know. In addition to the agenda, we had planned to bring the flow chart. It kind of shows them what their options were, working with the Health Department. And we also have this item in your packet. We're going to have this much larger scale on a, like a thirty-six by twenty-four that shows everybody's property. The ones that are in green are the ones that are failing. And then it has their front footage and their assessment costs, so everybody can see exactly what the, what the impact would be if we did the sewers.
I was visiting the Health Department during their open house, and one of the people there, the works, who indicated that, that maybe we should look at the idea, I think he said Sheldon Street, because they have failing systems, and maybe if we combine those two, if they're close enough, I think he said they were back to back, that it might make it more feasible in terms of.
We, when, when you first addressed that with me, I contacted Health Department. We got word back from them. They don't have any confirmation on any individual homes. They took six samples from the ditch, five of which indicated that there are probably failing systems somewhere along Sherman. We looked at the cost, the, the distance between Sherman and Lynnwood's about seven hundred feet, which is half the distance on Sherman. So, or I mean, half the distance on Lynnwood. So right there is about fifty percent more cost to the project. And then to bring it all the way up Sherman, we're looking at probably a project near eight hundred thousand dollars, and there's not that many homes.
Not that many.
Yeah, so I think it would actually increase the cost if we tried to combine the two.
It would seem that it would.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for looking into it anyway.
The atmosphere is not going to be conducive to spending any money on that one increase.
Right. So I guess if you have any comments, we can, and we'll have up until next week to finalize this agenda. So if you want to take the time to, to review and provide any comments, we'll be happy to address them.
I like this. This is really nice.
And we're going to have that on a larger scale too, so it's more easily readable.
Jeff, I'm just thinking, sure. But the auditor, Mrs. Esposito, has said, she told me that she was assisting a group of people from Lynnwood with, I think, information as to balances in the water resource ones, which is fine. But, so I'm not real certain what perception they will have at this meeting, or if it'll even come up. And we just need to be prepared that, I'm, I'm thinking, whatever end of the continuum here, someone's likely to say, you have all this money, can you not just go ahead and put that system in and pay for it?
Be prepared for that question.
That, that may not even come up, but I just want, you know, we just need to be prepared.
Okay.
That could, that might, that might happen.
Because that would really open floodgates, I mean.
Well, yes, no, I just, I just want to, you know, just be prepared, because she, she did tell me she was providing some information for a group that, and I'm just assuming maybe what they might be asking.
Okay.
Okay, so you're aware of that, Scott?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, board, we can move on here?
Okay, 3B, sewer backup claim process. Not sure if you had a chance to read my memo. Just to brief it, the policy, or the procedure that we're using was adopted current, the current procedure was adopted in 2013. We had been using it for probably a decade before that, in some iteration or, or other. But the board had asked for us to look at including acts of God, so we had done so, forwarded it to Michelle Ripley to take a look at from a safety loss perspective, as well as Prosecutor's Office. Michelle Ripley wrote back her comments. Charmin Ballard from Prosecutor's Office recently reviewed it, and she really didn't see where there was a need to do a legal review of this document. It was more of a, in her words, it was an administrative procedure. So, but she did advise that this is a, if it's a procedure that has been adopted, that we need to follow it all the way through and not skip any, any process up there. And then her, her concern was, if revised code gives you the immunity to not pay for things, you shouldn't be paying for things. But obviously, you know, it's, it's been the stance that, you know, it's kind of a moral thing that, you know, the board looks at on a case-by-case basis. So I'm not sure at this point what the next step is with this, since we have Michelle's review, but we don't have anything from Prosecutor's Office.
We don't need anything from the Prosecutor's Office.
Okay. So at this point, we could either adopt it with the changes that are indicated, or we could revise, and I could bring back for another day.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
On page two, there's a little square box that Michelle has commented on. Should we not include that language, where she's saying it, or is the one numbered C covered?
Where are you, Catherine?
On page four. It's called 3B.
Oh, I see. There's two 3Bs. Okay, gotcha.
She has a little box on, thinking what she's, what she's suggesting sounds good. But maybe it's covered under C, which is all red.
I don't think it is. C seems to be more or less, let's cover anything that could possibly happen, whether it's famine, fire, what have you.
Yeah, let's exclude as much as possible.
Exactly, yeah. That, yeah.
Okay, so maybe include her language under A. And then my last question has to do with D. Prior to receiving any compensation, the claimant must execute a release of liability and submit it, submit it to Water Resources Department. Shouldn't it be you, the director?
It could come to me. That's fine.
Rather, because it may get lost in the shop?
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that. That's an easy change. With respect to Ms. Ripley's comment, though, she had questioned either an aggregate amount of up to four thousand or one-time expense of up to four thousand. So which way should we go with that?
Well, it would be like a, a one-time only expense, any, but if there was a, like ten years down the road, there's another flood in the same spot, we would consider it again, I would think.
Okay.
So I think one time, does that make sense?
Yes.
Well, you know, the one, we actually exceeded the four thousand. I mean, in the sense of what we, the offer that we made and included that item, so.
That's right, we did some work.
Yeah, and we probably should have some.
That was a little different, though, because they weren't even connected, so.
Yeah, no, I know it was, but, you know.
This uses the word.
It is something we did.
This uses the word may, so that gives us some flexibility.
Absolutely.
It'd be very rare we would do more than that.
Agreed.
And then the only time I would want to do it is if it's clear, clearly, in our opinion, that the incident occurred because of something that happened with us.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll revise this and then I'll bring it back with the comments.
Okay. Can you, in a way, water sewer system update?
Updates. I received information from the mayor, and then actually had a follow-up conversation with their legal counsel. And basically, where they're at, from their legal review, they, they said that they cannot simply divest themselves of their asset. The only way that they can do that is if they put it up for bid, you know, advertise it for bid. There's exceptions to that. If they could prove that their asset's worth less than a thousand dollars, then they could do it, which, that's not going to happen. Or had our sewer district been formed under a regional sewer district, which is Section sixty-one nineteen, but we were formed under sixty-one seventeen, so there's no exception for us to take over their system. So at this point, I don't know that they're willing to go up for bid. But if they did, we'd have to bid something small, because anything we paid would have to be rolled back into the costs.
You know, I, I'm sure they got legal counsel for that opinion.
Yes.
But it seems to me that there's an exception to the rule in law, which, if it's being donated, for example, or it can be donated to a governmental unit, I think there's something in the law that allows it to be donated to another governmental unit if it's no longer, I guess maybe, maybe the glitch is that it can't be declared obsolete. I know that we're allowed if we have something of value.
But they have legal counsel, and I'm sure they're following.
Yeah, that's, that's who I spoke with.
It's, I wouldn't think that they're up for you to give, you know, to interfere in the sense of what they've decided.
Okay.
It would be, you know, they approached us, so it's kind of a, maybe this is their reassessment of that and thinking, no, we can't do it, whatever. It just, I can't help but wonder how this will affect the one customer that wanted to tie into the county system and.
They're doing a home.
At any time, but that's up to that customer in the village.
Right.
You know, I suspect this isn't over. I think this is just a, a long, you know, like you said, I don't want to over.
No, no, I'm sure.
We would, we can't override legal counsel, but we can ask a question, so.
I, you know, I, I'm not that interested. I shouldn't say it that way. You know, jurisdictions are, it's under their purview. If they'd ask for an opinion, you know, if they're not going to ask, I don't want to suggest it.
We, we did see in, actually, in Sunday's paper, they had an advertisement in the legal section. Their meeting on Thursday, they planned to take a vote to see whether or not they want to ask the county to operate the systems for us.
So maybe they've changed all, their entire posture.
Yeah. But with that, we don't really have the staff to do it. At the present time, we'd have to hire to do that. And then without the actual control of the budget or the funds, there's a lot of things that they're probably would need to do, and we wouldn't have any means to make that.
Well, I think you could do anything in a contract that you could do if you owned it. In other words, they could contract you to do the operation maintenance of the entire system. You would get all the money to go into, I would think you could do it that way, through a contract.
Potentially.
Yeah. It's just, you'd have to be really careful how the contract was written, so that the money coming in for the sewer bills would pay for the staff to operate the system.
But there may be a lot of capital expenditures as well.
Sure. But you don't think at this juncture?
I don't think it's in our best interest. I, I would recommend against it, but we can entertain anything if they come out. So I'll bring it back for the board consideration, so.
Okay, Ford, we'll proceed.
Okay. I wanted to mention Lean Ohio, real quick. I had contacted Kent State about seeing what it would cost for training. It would be about two thousand dollars per employee if we did Lean Ohio training for.
Per employee or per?
Yeah, they could come out as per employee. And we have forty-nine employees, so, you know, we're just shy of a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I wonder, yeah, if we, we could possibly.
We play scholarships, we get scholarships.
Right, did they do that?
Yeah, they can do that.
But you're not optimistic that they would get them, so, I mean, I don't know.
But they are, well, they're, we're only allowed as a, as a county as a whole to get, I believe, as twelve scholarships per quarter.
Okay.
Per quarter?
Per quarter. Now, there, we've only gotten two during this quarter. There are ten still available, but we would have to move fast. And I think what Jeff was intimating is that he wants more than just those ten.
Oh, sure.
The program is such that you really need to take it, whoever works together needs to take the training to get.
But couldn't you have ten go, and then next quarter have twelve, twelve go, then the following quarter? I mean, keep, hard for breaths until everyone is covered.
Yeah, there, there's the potential to do that. It's, with forty-nine employees having to be gone five days each, it's a little hard to fathom how we would actually do that logistically. I know I could do it easily with myself, the three managers, as like a first round, and then maybe tackle it with the supervisors, and then from that, see if we really want to keep going.
You might want to try doing that and get scholarships?
Yeah.
I'd like to see it include, you know, everyone.
Okay.
And it, it doesn't have to be at one fifth of school.
Oh, yeah.
But it's my opinion to be much more effective if, if you can include.
Everybody's on the same page.
Is it feasible for you to, in the first round, you said yourself in three, three supervisors?
Yeah, the three managers.
Could you mix that up a little and not have, I mean, maybe yourself?
Have some of the people and the supervisor.
Other nicks or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Or that just is your desire, you'd rather?
I just, I just thought, we'd get those, those four on board, and then get the next seven on board. And, but we can, we can do it however we need to. It's fine.
I, really, it's up to you in the sense of what, you know, what your feeling is to, so that the, the operation can still operate efficiently, but at least, I know it was beneficial for, about us, you know, as we attended as a group, but, but it was commissioners and the directors, and now we want to reach out and.
If we're going to take advantage of that, I think we need to do it.
Oh, yeah, scholarships.
They, they run a calendar quarter, this calendar quarter started March tenth.
So can we get an application in for these four people for the next quarter?
For the next quarter or for?
No, for now.
If it started March twelfth, it's too late?
That's when that starts, on March twelfth, by June. So up to June twelfth, I believe, is when you would be able to submit.
Okay, I was confused. Now, did you say there are twelve scholarships available? It was ten.
There's twelve available to us. We've used two.
Right, okay.
Because we sent Michelle and Chan.
For the quarter, but the quarter started in March or?
Started March tenth, I believe it is.
So then we'd have twelve after that, that following quarter.
If they renew it, it's, it's subject to the state's budget.
Okay.
But can the training actually be at any time?
Right. Once you are awarded the scholarship, then the training is, well, I don't want to speak out of turn. One of the reasons we didn't move forward on this is because we couldn't find any training for those ten available scholarships that was anywhere near Portage County. One was in Zanesville, one was in Lorraine. We were afraid to schedule it out in the next fiscal year because the state might not fund it.
Is there any possibility, if we could get the remaining ten, that they would come here?
I did discuss that with.
For that amount of money and make it available to?
It would have to, let's put it this way, it would have to be worth Kent State's while to do that. And then it would also have to be open to other agencies as well. But yeah, that can't be arranged.
Because that might be a way to pay for it and include more people at any one time to have it there.
Right.
So can you?
I'll make contact on that if you'd like.
Yeah, and let us know. I would think that would be, is that all right with you, Jeff?
Absolutely. So then for Water Resources, we're going to plan to send everybody at some point?
At some, yes.
But only on scholarship?
Okay.
As we can.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Unfortunately afford to pay for it. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, pending items. We did one and two. Two should I leave on for now? Or, okay. The number three?
Oh, I don't know if you want.
No, I, I thought it was pretty much laid to rest.
Okay, then I'll, I'll take two off. And if I have anything new, I'll just bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, sure, okay.
And then I'll keep the.
Yeah, if it should come up again.
Okay. And I'll keep the sewer backup on there for now, too.
Yeah, all right. You're going to finish that one up.
Yeah, and then we'll bring that back.
Changes.
City of Ravenna, their water quality seems to be going up improvement with what they're doing at the plant. they're doing at the plant. We're still working to get a meter installed at Powdermelt and Summit, and we've kind of agreed with Ravenna and Kent to kind of hold off on that for just a little while longer. But that should not be holding us up from being able to take water from them again in the near future. We are doing samples tomorrow, the quarterly samples for our water system and everything that we've done intermediate has shown that trihalamethan's and halocytic acid results are way down where they should be. So, things are going well with Ravenna water. Townes water, as far as I know, it's still on hold. There's a stall on their side. I've talked with Burgess and Iple. They called me a couple weeks ago. They're the consulting engineers for the city and they're working on a couple of items for the city. And the gentleman I spoke with at B&amp;N said that it's, it was moving forward and then it's kind of stalled on their side, so he doesn't really have any information on that. And I haven't heard anything directly from the city of Townes, even though I've asked numerous times. So, when we do find something out on that, I'll bring that back. Number five, we talked about. And number six is on hold right now. We're still trying to get easements. We think that we can work easements out to get the project finally wrapped up rather than have to go down any kind of route of eminent domain, so we prefer to do that before we take that route, if at all possible, so. Thank you, thank you.
Jeff, while you're here, we have an item further on the agenda discussion of something that was sent to you that was on the solar energy at the water and sewer treatment plants. I know it's in here. Any comment or anything you'd want to share with us?
Yeah, based on the criteria that was included in the memo.
Yeah.
We have four facilities that might work under that that we'd have to actually take a deeper look into, but Streetsboro wastewater plant looks like it would work on the surface. Shaleville Water Plant, we have plenty of property out there. I don't see any reason why it couldn't work there. Franklin Hills wastewater plant might work, but it's real, the site's already tight to try and get anything there. So I kind of threw out the idea, maybe Kent might want to go into something with us as a joint because the water plant for Kent is right next to ours. So maybe there's some benefit for both entities.
So you'll just follow?
Yeah.
Would you have interest in?
Yeah, and then there's the Randolph plant. Seems like there might be room there as well.
The only thing that wasn't in the memo that you should be aware of is that the County Commissioners Association has hired or is contracting with Palmer Energy. We did that last month for $20,000 to be a consultant to us in a way. So if we're interested in getting some expertise about whether or not it might be feasible, it would be important to call CCAO or contact them.
Okay.
And to find out exactly how we go about getting their service. The other thing that I learned when I was listening to Palmer Energy was that it doesn't pay to go on the grid. You have to have enough space so you can have your own solar system. And I was thinking out by you, where your offices, we have the jail, we have water resources, we have juvenile justice, and the dog warden, I don't know. But there's quite a few of our buildings right close together, so it might be just one grid there that would serve all of those buildings. So it might be wise to get in touch with CCAO, find out what Palmer can offer us.
Okay. Do you want me to do that? You want me to work with Joanne?
Deb or Joanne or you? I don't know. However you want to work it out.
We have, I gave you this.
Yes, yes. Okay, that's fine.
So you'll?
Yeah.
Just so that we take advantage, as a contractor, we may as well take advantage of their expertise.
Absolutely.
There is an additional cost to us.
No.
Okay.
That's good. Okay. Is that it?
Finished, if you're finished.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want, are you, do you want to do?
Just go ahead and do call.
Is that true?
He's here.
I thought you had the prosecutor attend.
She's not here.
Oh, no, I, you know, I have, we have the list, but I don't see the list.
No, I think she'll.
That's fine.
Let me go down and get my stuff. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Do you want a very?
I thought that's why he was up there to do this.
Yeah. Do you want to do the reservation?
Sure. Okay. Make a motion to approve the Tuesday, May 5th, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
My second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the Tuesday, May 5th, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
My second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the Tuesday, May 5th, 2015, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
My second. Any discussion? If not, please indicate acceptance by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion items. This was CCAO asking if, I think there's a, if anyone wants to attend their development, economic development symposium, and there were some opportunities to be a sponsor, some kind of a higher level. I thought I saw one for maybe $250 in there somewhere, but I don't know if we've had an opportunity.
I think it was $175 for attending. Am I right?
I thought I saw something.
Just look like this, it's all the sponsorship opportunities. Find A.
Oh, yeah.
So if, oh, if you're interested in attending, would you just want to, on your own, I guess, for us, fill out a request and attend it?
I think it costs $100 if we do it early, per member, per person for attending. So they want us to invite all the economic development people. Have we done that already?
I gave you a list of who I thought, but you can add to it or take off. They asked the county engineer as well.
The table sponsors, $175, yeah. Does that, what does that include?
Just your logo?
Oh, just your logo. Not the, not the attendance. Okay, I got maybe.
Remain a logo on the table.
It doesn't include any one attending.
No, unfortunately.
I think you get four tickets for $2,500 donation.
Yeah. Four tickets for $2,500?
Yes, two tickets for $1,000 to $1,500.
Yeah. Well, can any of these other entities attend it if they have the money and they're?
I can forward all the information to, is there anyone else you want to invite? The four offices?
Just so they know that, the invitation, we're not offering you to pay for it, yeah.
Port Authority.
Unfortunately, we can't.
Can engineer, was it a recommendation, and the JFS director? Is there anyone else you want to send the notice to?
Port Authority.
I think that should cover it.
Yeah. Okay. The next would be the Guardian Shield event.
My aim is just concern, this is just a table, this is a tabletop, but it's for Ravenna City and Robinson. And she just wants to be sure that the board does not want her to go to observe.
Did you say that again, Denise?
Amy just wants to be sure the board does not want her to go to this event, the tabletop, on June 1st.
The city of Ravenna Hospital. I wouldn't think they want Amy to.
Just wanted to be sure. Number three, the board does have leadership scheduled on May 26th, which is right after the holiday. I don't know if you have a topic that you want to talk about? Do you want to reschedule it for June? I don't know who's off and who's in that day.
Oh, I see. There may be some extended.
You don't know, right?
Sure, sure.
I haven't checked.
Well, that's a real possibility. I'd like us to continue on the, maybe some feedback thus far if any was. Unless, you know, let me digress here a moment because, Vicky, I know you're on the committee.
Right.
Would it be appropriate, you know, not appropriate, Jim, sure, to share anything?
With our last during committee, there were some points that I said that I would speak to you two about. I think that should probably be done amongst the three of us.
So then do we want to maybe not have this leadership meeting right after that holiday in case there are people that have taken an extended, you know, with having that money off, they may be taking, that gives them a long weekend. I don't know that.
Let's reschedule it for June.
Okay.
And then we can, you can bring us up to?
Right.
And up to date on what you.
Did you have things you wanted to discuss with us today?
Good, I don't have the list. I mean, I don't know, should that be done in open session? I don't know.
Oh, okay, well.
Should it be done in open session?
Why don't you review it?
I don't know what it is.
Yeah, why don't you review it and then let us know?
Okay.
The next was the tax, 2016 tax budget information that Todd sent us. I like the memo.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Number five, there is a conflict between the Hyrum Village meeting for solid waste and your public meeting for Lindwood. See, I think I'm going to be at the Lindwood.
I am too. I think Lindwood is more important, but we can contact the village council members, you know, prior to that, if we want to do it.
And Bill will be there.
And I'll let Bill know that, you know.
Yeah, yeah. If you would let him know about the Lindwood.
Number six, you talked with Jeff Monday today.
Right. I just thought while he was here, we could talk to him.
Yes, yes.
And the next is the request from CCAO about support for hospitality due. And I would think we want to write a letter of support as a board?
Yeah.
I would think we should, or. And the real entries are there for you to review. As Paul's making his way back down here after this morning's meeting, and I know that Todd will be, you know, start gathering all the information, I'm wondering, we really, I think we should have a work session with Todd.
Oh, absolutely, Maureen.
You know, to look at all these, everything that was suggested and all the revenues and, and I'm trying, I didn't ask him, but it's all right if we go ahead and ask him what he thinks might be a good time. I know the sheriff is looking into one aspect of it and.
You know, I got a text from Dale Kelly in our break there, said he didn't think the questions were answered. So I kind of went over. I thought, well, the Youngstown thing is the first thing. We thought, Sheriff Doak will do that today.
Right.
And then we're going to look into the additional staff. We're going to have a working session with Todd.
Yes.
I mean, I just read.
And all the revenue sources.
Exactly. And I told him that we were thinking about the sales tax on the ballot in November. That was my take on it.
Well, we did a general entry that we want to do that. And then it's Kathleen, we need to form the process to file.
Okay, but I guess that's why I kept asking Dave, because I want to make sure that we were covering what David wanted, but I don't, he seemed to think we did not.
It seemed to me the most imperative, my interpretation, was the additional staff.
Yeah.
And then, of course, we have, you know, maybe not to proceed with making the physical changes out there. But it all comes back to really emanating from Todd as to what do we have available.
And I know this is going to cost money also, Maureen, but if Sheriff Doak finds out that it is commendable and it's affordable to transport, then that might alleviate the additional staff right now. Is that correct? Or did I misunderstand that?
I don't know. That would be, sequentially, that's what we would hope, but. Hi Denise.
Good morning.
There she is.
I made it. No, it's Paul's fault.
Okay, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure where I am.
I got your whole list here.
And it's a lovely little list. And I don't have anything to update you with on any of these. Paul has brought one thing to my attention, which we would ask for an executive session, unless you have some questions or issues on this list and, or something else you'd like to bring up.
No, no.
So we want to go to the second session for?
For pending or imminent litigation.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for pending litigation?
Pending or imminent.
Pending or imminent litigation?
Yes. Only the second, a second vote. Go, Paul.
Yes, Kathleen?
Yes. Counselor signed to do that.
Oh, good.
Still can't get over it.
Okay, no, I. I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
My second motion. We'll call.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Is there any action coming out?
No.
No action. And I have nothing else to go over on my list. If you have any other questions, thank you, Denise, thank you.
Paul, what do you do?
Yes.
Have a good day.
All right, you too.
Thanks for the blessing.
I'm too.
Take care.
In my session, you do have in your, should have in your signature folder, the resolution authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters for the Dog Warden.
It's behind you.
It's mine.
Oh, it's got the resolution, yeah.
There's nothing else. You can give them the contract.
Not yet. I have the contract here.
Oh.
So they have, the union has reviewed it and signed it, and it's ready now for your signature today with your resolution ratifying the agreement.
I'll make a motion to accept and enter into a successor collective bargaining agreement between the Portage County Board of Commissioners and Teamsters Local Union Number 436 concerning employees in the office of the Portage County Dog Warden.
My second motion. Is there any discussion? If not, do you want to do roll call? Because it's collective bargaining, that's not necessary.
Good idea.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. All right. And we'll sign it. Thank you, Paul.
So the only thing out there now is the sheriff, is that true?
Right. There's, and as I think I've indicated before, there are six bargaining units out there. We currently have scheduled, we've consolidated basically the corrections officers and the sheriff's deputies into two fact findings. And one is going to be in June, the other one is going to be early July.
Can I ask you, are there the usual signature page for the three of us in here?
Yes, I'm sorry, page 25.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Jeff said you didn't talk to enough in the meeting.
Oh, that's right. The, as you recall, I believe it was last week or the week before, you authorized the Water Resources Department to go on a 4-10 schedule, subject to the union agreeing to it. Will we have, and I put that in your box last week, we now have an MOU with the union consenting to that.
What was that for, the MOU?
To consent to the 4-10 schedule.
Oh, right, yeah. So that can start?
That's going to start on Monday.
Okay.
We need to get a supply of sticky, oh, little sticky things.
Any more? Give me the rest. You want to find a poll on the offices?
Oh, no, that's.
Just put those on, those right there.
It just takes a little longer to get them. Oh, good. Oh, it's sticky. Where's the sticky? Well, I'll tell you, I am just too acclimated to these little stickers. Thanks for putting the sticker there. I was fumbling around the pages. Anything else, Paul?
That's all I have, thank you.
Do you want to talk to the board about contacting the CCAO?
Yes, yes. When we were, after the sheriff left, Kathleen and I were in the break room, and I mentioned that I wonder if we could contact CCAO and ask them what might be occurring with the other any seven counties.
Regarding this?
Well, yes, and I'm sure grants, which Kathleen also brought up, and any grants that we can apply for, certainly we do that, but they might have another resource. I know the webinar that I sat in on had some references to some grants, I opened them, but I was wondering if we could ask Deb to initiate a contact with CCAO, and let's find out, like, how many are in a building mode or maybe putting on additional pods or just what maybe these other counties are doing?
Sure, sure. I agree.
If they're contracting out prisoners or?
I did contact, I did ask one person sitting near me about the overcrowding, and he indicated that his particular county has five county jail, I mean, they all go together, I've forgotten what county it was.
So they didn't have a problem, but?
I'll be down.
Because some of the counties are very small.
Yes.
But all the rest are?
Well, you know, and I understand thoroughly what they were saying, but it's, you know, like the double whammy, you need to put on two pods, Commissioner, you know, okay. James.
Sure you do.
And then, and then the thought of, I heard Judge Bittman saying, Mark and I are looking at alter care, I'm thinking, wait a minute.
That's good if someone else doesn't.
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely, because it'd be great lockdown.
We'll see.
I'm just thinking, pretty soon, the only general fund item, we just do away with all other services will be law enforcement.
This has nothing to do with the sheriff, but I got a call yesterday from Chris Krikoff, and I probably need to talk to Denise about this. She wanted to know about Corsa, I guess they've always been covered under Corsa, that they are buying two trucks, I think, and she wanted them titled in the park district's name. And she wanted to know, does Corsa cover that, and I really don't know. Do they need to be in the county's name if Corsa covers it, or?
I'm trying, there's a 1C3, or that, of course, it does cover, I can't.
I think you just talk to Joanne.
Yeah.
Talk to Joanne. She handles your insurance, so I can't imagine that Chris wouldn't really talk to them, but Joanne and Michelle, I would start there. Okay, thank you, I didn't know where it started.
It'll be interesting to get the answer, I wouldn't think it would be covered by Corsa, but maybe.
Well, if they're not, she wanted to know what the fee would be for them, but, I mean, and I have no idea.
It would be good if she, if the park district could join a Corsa, because under our jurisdiction, because they're much cheaper for her because of the population, I mean.
Right, right.
But you're right, it would start with Joanne and that.
It would have to be under our jurisdiction, I would think, I'm not sure, I shouldn't say that.
Okay. Well, I will speak with Joanne.
What does CDIS stand for?
It's the community, it's the new process for your CDBG, community.
Oh, that one.
I can't remember what the title is.
It's the Community Development By Grant.
Yes, CDBG, the new process.
The new rules.
Yeah, I had this worked down, I'll go Google it when I get back to my office.
Yeah, community development, what is the IS, is that?
I have to look and see.
The independent, is that that special committee?
This is the second meeting of that committee. And I think Todd told me before what it was, and I wrote it down, but I don't remember.
I was trying to associate, I knew CD, but I didn't even think of that. I was thinking it might have something to do with a jail facility, I think I'm just on that, on that.
Yeah.
We can actually do our journal entries.
Yes, yes.
And a journal, right?
Yeah, did you say there's some, anything else? Is there a motion for journal entries?
Yes, I'll just make a motion, best journal.
My second.
Any further discussion, if not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, no?
I think that's it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any further discussion? No. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I know even why I asked for further discussion on that one.
Wow, okay, I think we've got all the signing done, is that correct?